Apparently had a great experience and so that's something that I think we can all be proud of. And today we had our Tabernacle Legacy Committee met over at the Tabernacle and that's a committee that we've asked and had some people volunteer to serve on that are gonna help to kick off our fundraiser to raise money for our Tabernacle, to save the building basically. We're trying to raise five million dollars to save the building and remodel it and make it a lot more usable space and that kind of thing. So, so we appreciate those who have volunteered to serve on that committee and are willing to help us out there. So you'll be hearing more about that as time goes on. That's really an important thing for us here and that's basically our community building. So, anyway, so tonight we have some of the engineers, gentlemen here from Keller Engineering, and Jim and Nathan and...
Tyrell.
Tyrell, sorry Tyrell, I didn't write your name down quite fast enough. And my memory is short term, so we appreciate you folks being there with us tonight. And at the meeting long ago, we were asked to show what the options were when they first considered the road, you know, being built that comes up through Sunrise, Sunrise Drive there and what the options were at the time and so that we can all understand what they were, why things were decided the way they were and that kind of a thing. So, Jim, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to you at this point to give your presentation and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, it's good to be with you tonight. My name's Jim Mullen. I work with Keller, associate, been with Keller for about 24 years. I'm actually Vice President. Keith called up about a month ago and said, "Jim, remember that transportation plan you guys did in 2004?" And I said, "I think so, I had more hair then." But we went through a lot of effort back then to produce this transportation plan. Yes, just to come tonight and kind of explain some of the decision processes that were then and some of the things we looked at at that point and kind of leads us up to today. So that's what we're here tonight to discuss. So, I'm Jim Mullen, I'm Nathan Cleaver, Tyrell Park with us tonight as well. So, next slide. Okay, so, way of introduction, our goal tonight is to present what's been studied for the last two decades, specifically on the University Boulevard, the East Parkway Corridor and also Sunrise Drive. A little bit about the historical timeline. And this whole concept started in 1979, likely when US-20 was constructed. There was a great transportation master plan that was constructed at that point called for an arterial connecting to Sunrise Drive at that point. One of the reasons we do transportation master planning is to look out into the future, try to envision what an area, what a city, what a community is gonna look like 10, 20, 50, maybe even 100 years out, so that you can plan for that growth. So you can plan to put roadways in, you can set land aside, so development doesn't come and build in an area where it would've been good to have a roadway or something, so that you don't have to, you can spend your money on building roads rather than buying houses right away. Plan, you set that and dedicate that land for the future roads. In 2003 and '04, we had some public meetings and work meetings with the city council here at that time. I don't know if anybody was on city council then. We worked with the county commissioners at that point. We completed the master plan that was adopted 2004 by both, actually by Madison County, the City of Rexburg and the City of Sugar City. Then in 2006, LTAC, which is a state agency, provided us some funding for the county and the city to look at a more detailed master plan for East Parkway Corridor and look at various alternatives and options for that corridor specifically. Once again, we had several public meetings and 2013, we finalized that plan and recommended alignment that was also considered and adopted by the city and county. And there've been a couple more transportation plans since then, 2015 and 2022 that also further looked at these areas. And how that compares to subdivisions near Sunrise Drive, Crest Haven was built in 1977, about the same time of the construction of US-20. Their Sunrise Drive was dedicated with the flat at that point. Vista Avenue, when LTAC was built in 2003. South Vista Avenue was vacated in 2006. Sunrise Drive, then King Wall was also completed in 2008. Donner Square, 2008. So, the historical timeline, how those things mesh together. Next slide. So in 2004, in our master plan, it was an area-wide, a comprehensive area-wide look at, if I can get the word here, but there was a division of kind of corridor being set aside way further south and even the East Parkway Corridor, University Drive area that way. Some north-south routes, really trying to dedicate how the growth would happen over, like I said, over the next 20, 30, 50, 100 years and so the leaders of the community could set aside some roadway and some property to accommodate the needed growth and the need of transportation needs for the future. Next slide. Looking more specifically, once again, this is a 2004 master plan. The University Boulevard was identified and has since been built. East Parkway Corridor, through Sunrise Drive and up to the north, it was laid out in concept at that point. It seemed like at that time to be a very good process to help traffic flow throughout the community as the community grows, to be able to accommodate the traffic needs in the area. Next slide. Then in 2013, as I mentioned, as part of the East Parkway Corridor plan, there were a whole bunch of different alternative alignments that were considered. You can see all these different lines, there's a copy of a figure right from the report. Whole bunch of different alignments that were considered. And in the end, after looking at all of them, the bright yellow was the one that was considered to be the best alignment for the corridor through that area. Next slide. Zooming in a little bit closer, the subdivisions we're considering, taking the traffic to seventh south, taking it just a little bit north and also bringing it straight through. Each of that has their advantages and disadvantages. And if we look at the next slide, kind of go through those a little bit more detail. If we take it to seventh south, ultimately that'll increase traffic on seventh south and does not add value to our current system. This one to the north affects residents as well, but we also built some pretty steep topography in this area, about 17% grade, which is very steep. We don't want to see it being ever above 10% generally, and that's steep itself, so that's a really difficult grade to overcome. And it's not quite as straight as detailed as this one would be. This alignment right here was adopted April 5th, 2023. The city owns the property in this area, this has been set up for that roadway to come in the future. Okay, so here's laser the words, not like the wire. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any questions so far?
I don't know. So could you explain a little better why seventh south was not, doesn't add any value to the system, what you mean when you say that?
It's already there and so the traffic, it wants to go that way, if they wanna go onto campus, it can still go that way, but it doesn't alleviate any traffic from there if we just leave that as the system. If we provide another alternative, some of the traffic will go this way, some will go this way, that kind of thing.
Quick question. The south Rexburg exit, it's right there going straight, was that built at the same time as Highway 20 was built in 79 or was that added later?
I don't know, actually.
Yeah, I think it was built...
In case you, yes, that was...
Okay, so they're all original?
Yeah. Okay. Good question.
Any other questions? Can the others go far?
Okay, so if we look at Sunrise Drive, kind of zooming in a little bit further, the initial concept would be to have just a two-lane road with a stop sign like there is now, connecting to the University Boulevard, straight up that shop, up that hill, and then eventually moving on to the east. So it'd be a two-lane road with that, like I said, a stop sign right there by the church. Next slide. And as traffic warrants, that two-lane road could be converted to a two-lane plus a turning lane right here. This configuration instantly matches what's being designed for the road and the bridge crosses the river up to the north. So this is the two-lane road plus a center turn light. So very similar, so that's as far as we can see to the future, how Sunrise Drive would look like depending on the traffic flow it needs to refer in that area.
And do you know the width of that?
The width of that road right now?
With that configuration, you don't know?
The... No. Well...
Sixty-five.
Probably the asphalt width right now.
Forty-five, isn't it?
And what would you need for that?
We just...
You'd have that easily.
Easily. This would allow for parallel parking plus the three lanes.
And you don't know the width of it though? At this configuration?
He's saying the width of the asphalt right now is sixty-five.
It might be, well, the asphalt I think is a little less than sixty-five, it might be sixty and then two and a half feet.
Perfect, that around either side. Okay, so around sixty, sixty feet here, put the three lanes in here, you'd need...
Three twelve-foot lanes. So you have enough for parallel parking on both sides of the road plus three lane section.
Like 100 probably.
There's a couple notes about this, right there where the church is, the city does own the right-of-way, right there, the city does own that. And really, this is developer-driven, the road itself does not control the capacity of the road, it's the intersection. And so as development occurs, that's when you look at, does that switch to a signal eventually or just leave it as a...
Quick question, this picture, does it show the configuration where it hits the intersection? Does it show the configuration as it is now or would this be, I can't remember if the road, I know it widens out right there at Westwood Drive and before it, but does it narrow down again?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so this is showing us what it would look like when the city...
When we go to the...
When we go to the second, the future concept.
The future, okay.
The immediate concept, we go to the previous slide.
Okay.
The immediate concept would be, you see how wide this is right here? You'd have just one lane going each direction and this is a stop sign right here. Any other questions on these configurations? Okay, next slide. And in summary, this concept has been planned for more than two decades, it's been looked at, the right-of-way has been established, the plan has been documented, that Sunrise Drive is the most efficient means for traffic flow through that area. It reduces traffic conflicts and turning movements and like I said, the right-of-way has been established in that area. It was conceived over two decades ago in the report, after meeting the city and county, documented then and was even talked about, like I said earlier, and truly the best way to get traffic up through that area. So, kind of, presentation pretty quick, pretty dirty, we figured there might be some questions, we can dive into it if you'd like.
The bridge was going in further.
Yep.
What's the design width of that?
So it's a three-lane roadway with bike, pipe lanes on both sides.
So width would be...
It's probably thirty-six plus another 10 feet of pavement.
That's a bridge, you cannot handle it either.
No.
Is that the one that was labeled west arterial on that one map of kind of the whole city?
Just the back of each slide. Yeah, so it'd be connecting the southern to north.
Right.
So that's that segment that ties into north seven.
Okay, so it's not the red one that says west arterial on it, it's...
Further south.
Okay, okay.
So this roadway will come in, cross the bridge and cross the river and...
So this red road that says west arterial and has the number one pointing at it, has that been constructed or is that, was that an option that was looked at or something?
Yeah, so they were looking at, right, so the concern back in 2004, just like today, Second East, right, the traffic volume on Second East, how do we look at getting traffic off of Second East or allowed on Second East, right, because you can look at different things, expanding Second East out to seven lanes, having more traffic, or you look at alternative routes. So the Fifth West or the west arterial was one of the routes. And then the East Parkway Corridor was another route, right? And I think that's where that was funded, through LTAC when Keller did the study, was the reason for it was to say, "Well, let's look at options for getting traffic off of Second East where people can move." Because if we have an issue on the bridge on Second East, right, all of a sudden, where does traffic have to go to make it across the river, right? You've really got US-20 or you've got Sugar City Cemetery, right?
I think you might mention too about, you know, with the development happening up north, that Fifth West arterial has probably become more important than it used to be, right?
Yeah, no, in fact, we're looking, we're going after a grant for Fifth West extension of that.
And 20 years ago, that I think East Parkway Corridor was envisioned probably to have been built maybe by now, I don't know, but, I mean, it's hard to always say, but it...
It's really development-driven.
Things can change, right? Things can change, yeah. So now we're looking at Fifth West as being probably a more, something that will happen maybe sooner than later and, well, it's hard to say.
It'll still be, trying to get funding, right?
Yeah.
Really, there's, when you start looking at river crossings or crossings over US-20, those get really expensive. And so those ones, you really have to go after, get grants, a lot of these are 20 years in the making, almost 20 years of planning, trying to get in the queue or figure out a way to get grant funding to make it happen.
I have a couple things that they thought's all right. And so I've taken an interest in this little piece and so just a couple things I want to point out, that I know that the plans were made for that piece that goes by Sunrise before the houses were there, that would be in the way essentially if it was built to three lanes, but they're there now, so that's a problem to consider because to build it to three lanes is gonna be about 100 feet and you could pull up GIS and measure right now if you'd like to, because I have measured it several times. It's about 85 feet from the Watsons, just for one example, from their property line, including the easement of the church. That's including the easement, that's 85 feet. So if we get to the point where we do want to build this, we have two options, either the property owners agree to sell their homes and if they do not, then you have eminent domain, those are your two options, because you can't build it without one of those options.
What do you say, homes?
There's three, there's three homes that it would cut into. To build that to 100 feet and in our, in the...
I'm sorry, if it was 100 feet now or 85 feet, we only need, to get three lanes, you need 36 feet.
Well, you could, you could pull it up right now, it's not 85 feet right now, because I just measured it. You could pull up GIS.
The roadways, I wanna say it's like 65, top of the curb, top of the curb, do you wanna bring it up there?
So...
You can measure it, yeah.
Yeah, let's measure it, let's measure it, because it's about 85 feet.
At the wide point, I'm talking about the wide point, not the narrow point by the church, so.
I'm saying to build the 100-foot road, you're going to have to cut into people's property.
We're actually saying you would leave the existing curbs where it's at, adjacent to those homes that are on the road.
But there's not enough, but there's not enough room to build a 100-foot road.
We don't need it.
But that's what the plans say for the three, for that, for the configuration he just brought up, you just said it would be 100 feet.
No, it's 36 feet, right, is what you need for roughly three lanes, right, and then you have parking on the sides of that.
Just another eight and a half feet dimension.
So why, then why in the transportation plan does it say that to have a principal arterial road, you would need 100 to 118 feet total? So why does it say that in the plan then?
Generally, that's at the intersections where that's needed. This particular location's not, and I imagine the city's arterial standard section requires 100-foot right-of-way is the standard that you've probably obtained from the developer.
Yeah, so you look at, if you're looking at a road cross-section, so you're probably really for a five-lane configuration, you could fit a five-lane configuration on the existing asphalt as it is right now, but that would be no parking on the edges.
And how close would it get to, you're saying you wouldn't have to move the curb at all of the house?
Is that when the road is widened though?
Yes, yeah.
The county, the county that...
So you look at 60 feet.
So it's currently 60 feet and you're saying you only need 20 feet more? I'm so confused.
No additional, no additional footage.
How would there be no additional footage, you're widening the road.
We're not, we're not proposing that.
We're not, we're not needing to widen.
As wide as the road is wide as it is now on the west end will be extended to the east. Could that wise up?
So it's...
Well, that's not what we said in last year, this is different than what we said at the fall.
And then we got two and a half foot curb on either side, so that's 65 feet from top back of curb to top back of curb. And then obviously you got the sidewalks on there as well.
Okay, because that's totally different than what you said last year, because last year when we went over this, it's the plan, you said in the plan that it might take the 100 feet, so you're saying for sure it's not gonna be the 100 feet.
No, I mean, if we were looking at, if you look at seven lane going through there, you'd be buying out all those homes along there.
I know, yeah, but it says, it says for the five lane, it says 100 feet in the transportation plan.
So that's total right-of-way, so that's not, that's not a road street width, right? So sometimes you look at and you say, "Well, ideally would be nice to have a 100 feet in there," because, right, because you look at, you've got, if you went 70 feet top back of curb to top back of curb, right, so that's your street width, then you've got seven-foot landscaped strip, then you've got a five-foot sidewalk on top of that, right, so you've got 12 feet to 24 feet on that, right, and then you have six feet extra or three feet on either side, that would allow for that 100-foot right-of-way section, right? So sometimes when we talk right-of-way, we're talking about, okay, what's the full distance that I need of that, that right-of-way, right? Now that's not always the case, that you can gain everything that you would want in an ideal situation, right? So sometimes you just say, "Well, this isn't ideal, but we can still make this work." So like a three-lane road works on that asphalt, no problem.
But then the five, so with the five lane, you're saying?
Five lane would be, you wouldn't be able to have parking on the, on the strip with a five-lane road.
Nor would you want parking.
But you wouldn't need any more footage.
So what, so what is the, what is the city's right-of-way now? How much do we...
So if you look at right-of-way, you want the, I mean, my guess is, I mean, real rough, would be, I've got 60 plus two and a half, so 65 plus five and five, so I've got another 10 on top of that, so 10 on top of there.
That's all you need.
For that, yeah. For that, in that section.
This is different than what we said last year. If you were to put an arterial out, farmland, there wasn't any, any other obstructions, then obviously we wanted to obtain parking by right of the road.
Yeah.
But we can't.
Right, we can't, that's what I was, that was my whole point.
Measure. What they're asking, I think. No, right-of-way, total right-of-way. There to there, yeah, let them.
Currently parking's legal on both sides of the street on the edges. And then we'll stay that way where it's parallel to the sidewalk.
Eighty-four. Yeah, but we don't need to go any bigger.
The last slide that we had, that you just had, the next slide shows the configuration with the three lanes and it does not modify the curbs, except at the church where this city owns it. This cur line stays the same.
Can we talk about the safety though, with my house on that intersection, even as any artillery? We have multiple safety regulations that we're out of with allowing our house to be built after it was already set.
Yeah, there were, I mean, there were, there were some obvious things there with your place in particular that, you know, some of the things that probably shouldn't have been built anyway and that may be something that we'll have to deal on a, on an individual basis with you, come, you know, if you decide you don't want to have that situation anymore, you know, we'll just have to visit with you about that and see what we need to do.
But you would allow it to be unsafe even though you didn't allow it to be built?
Well, we prefer, we would try to do everything we can to make it as safe as possible and if it's an, it's an untenable situation for you, that's, that's the point when we'd want to visit with you and say, you know, if you don't want to live there in that situation anymore, then we may have to, that may be one house that we'd have to buy out, which, you know, we don't like to do, but sometimes we have to do things we don't want to do. So that, that might be the answer to that situation. But we'd certainly like to, you know, visit with you about different options and stuff to make it as safe as possible. I mean, we're obviously, you know, we, we wish that that hadn't happened and that, that that house hadn't been built there, but it is, so we just have to deal with it the best we can at this point.
We wish the road not to be built, you know? They were wishing.
Yeah, well, we all wish for a lot of things, but, you know, sometimes the things are, are, you know, set up the way they are and, you know, that's, that's the way it's been planned and at this point unless, you know, unless the council wants to make any moves to totally revamp the plan and do it differently, but the trouble is, we've looked at the options and there's really not, the other options aren't really any, any better, so.
I think it's important to clarify, there's nothing about the current configuration that violates any industry standards for safety. If the road were to be built out to an arterial standard and the speed were to increase to 50 miles an hour, then...
That's not what's in the thing.
Not what's in the plan.
No, we have multiple things that show right from there.
Yeah, I'm not here to debate it or argue it, I'm saying we tell you the industry standards, based on all of the engineers sitting in this room, they will tell you, your proximity to that intersection does not violate industry standards. If the speed goes up, then the distance from an intersection starts to increase for safety reasons. Your house as it currently is configured does not violate industry standards.
It's in your plan, they're right in there.
There are preferences and there are standards.
So your plan has to be changed to...
Our preferences is what you see in the book.
And of course, you know, that's, as he said, you know, if the speed were to go up, but that's, that's not our intention here, is for that speed to go up there. In fact, our intention probably would be in the future for it to go down, not up. And so, those are, yeah, you know, it may, it may become, you know, a lesser speed than, you know, so, you've got the stop sign right there.
Twenty-five right now.
What's that?
Speed that is 25 right now on the side.
Yeah, I, well, is there, is there a speed limit sign there even, it's so short?
The speed is 25, I'm trying to say is, the management of the traffic would result in lower speeds, the speed limit would be set by the engineers, not by the desires.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes, you certainly may.
I think we probably won't revisit this again. So I just want to say, all the things that I have thought about, so the one to the north of Crest Street Drive that you said had the wrong kind of grade for it, but I guess, so it has the same grade as Seventh South, so, you know, pretty similar to Seventh South?
It's actually not, it's quite a bit, there's a, there's a pretty large hill there and so to make it over that hill, it's, you measured it, it's up to 16%, which Seventh...
You can go back to that slide, right, that might be good.
Go back.
That way you can...
So, and I did, so I know you pulled this thing... So, and I did, so I know you will just think I was playing house, because I'm not an engineer, I totally understand that, but, um, I had someone help me with another example of how you could jog it differently, so that the grade was not.
It's showing in blue, right?
Uh-huh, so, so how come that wouldn't work? Why is that not enough?
No, I think, I think that was, uh, when we put that one in, looking at the different options, we're like, okay, here's what the option was that they showed back then, and obviously they didn't have the topography underneath there, that they're just saying, well, here's some different lines that you can go through. And we put the topography in and we said, whoa, that's, that's sixteen percent grade through there. So the only other option would be to curve it down, right, to get it within the grades, that would work.
And so, so how come it wouldn't be okay to do that there, but it would be okay to do it by the Benfields? Because the grade as written on that is forty percent, thirty-five to forty percent, so why is it okay to do it there, but not here? I just don't understand the difference.
Okay is a, uh, I mean, when you're, when you're trying to design roads, right now you would design Seventh, that's even great. It's not safe above, uh, Eight is what normally I'd say in small country. Does the city have a policy on that?
With Seven.
Seven percent. So, uh, industry standard that was referred to is, is maximum of ten percent grades, that you would do anything, four percent or higher, a truck standing still will slide.
So then why is the Benfields okay?
So, I think I can clarify, the Benfields road is not designed, and if it were, gets, starts getting ready to design, they won't design it with a thirty or forty percent grade. People have to turn and go south, then cross and come back, and they'll have to move it far enough south to avoid anything greater than a seven percent grade.
So then how come they can't move this one to avoid it?
They can, but as was pointed out by, during the presentation, it results in movement north-south and serpentine, which becomes inefficient and puts cars back onto Seventh South, which defeats the purpose of getting cars off of Seventh South. And all of which are good thoughts, but they were considered, and they were considered extensively ten years ago, and where they were discounted as not being the most efficient way, at least as I understood the presentation. Certainly the most efficient way to bring traffic from this point to this point is through here. We come up through here, it's very serpentine, we get up on the seventh south.
Which is also not very safe.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of corners and things through there, seventh down south doesn't pull traffic off of that.
So not being a member of the council at the time, is it fair to say then that the council decided to go ahead with this configuration that goes on Sunrise, because that's the straight shot down to the exit, the south exit on, on.
That's reading different.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Okay.
So I have a question then, so efficiency is your main objective?
Sorry, what?
Efficiency then is your main objective?
Well, efficiency, we look at, you know, the engineers look at efficiency and safety and all of the different.
Well, they haven't removed that safety, but I'll go with the efficiency, that, that, I get that. But safety is not really being looked at when you've got six kids who live on that main street. So the safety part, I don't believe.
Well, there's a lot of safety measures that we can and will, I mean, there, you know, there's a stop sign there, and, you know, we've lowered, you know, speed limits, I mean, all of the different things that we do over in my former neighborhood, you know, Pioneer Road, you've got a lot of kids crossing that road to come to the Park Street Church, and, you know, we've put in crosswalks and Seventh North out here where you've got, uh, wood, uh, s- what is it?
Stone Bridge.
Stone Bridge, yeah, you've got that church, and so they've got the same situation, I mean, we've got the same situation all over town, and so, you know, we try to make everything as safe as we can, and then rely on people to be as safe as they can.
None of those other things you just mentioned, they'll come straight up for highway, and straight up from a highway exit, straight up the hill where people are trying to get to the college, the temple, and heading out to shooter.
Well, you're right, you're right, that, I mean, over time, it can become very busy, but, but if you, I, I will point out that if you've driven on Pioneer Road, it's a very busy road too. I mean, you know, so, you know, there's just, you know, you, you gotta look at those things, you gotta say, okay, what's the best way to move traffic? What's the, what's the safest way to make, make it, you know? Well, the whole idea is to try to divide traffic up, so that you're not shoving it all up one road. You know, it's like Second East, you know, have you ever tried to drive up Second East at?
All the time.
Yeah. And, uh, and then when the one lane of the bridge was closed, it was backed up, cleared down to the courthouse, I mean, you know, we try to spread out the traffic so that we don't have it all going in, in one place.
I can, I just, you will have to put a light there.
A what?
You will have to put a light there.
We, we probably will eventually, yeah.
It says stop sign, you're saying stop sign, I'm saying that will be backed up down the hill every morning.
Yeah.
And what they're gonna do is they're gonna turn left on Hillview or Westwood and then go up Crest. Because they, they're all backed up, they're gonna go left on Westwood, left on Hillview, up Crestview, Westwood. And then turn left, by Sherry's Men's House.
Yeah, yeah, well, and I would, I would guess you're probably right on that, and that, uh, that's something that, you know, when, when it starts getting to the point where a, a stoplight is warranted, that's when we put one in.
Yeah, literally minutes open, that will be, everyone's gonna say, oh, we go straight up here and then turn left and go to campus, because then we won't have to wait for the light on Seventh South.
Yeah.
I tried to, my house.
Oh, we won't even be looking at out of our, our streets to go left, because the traffic would be insane.
It's not that bad.
Oh, yes, it is.
As soon as it opens.
I mean, there, there's a lot of places.
Have you driven from my neighborhood, I drive from my neighborhood to Kennedy Elementary every morning, high peak traffic time. I am waiting two lights to go to campus.
Believe me, I understand, but, but I live, I live just off Pioneer Road, and I've lived there for thirty years, and I've seen this happen, I've seen this exact thing happen, with, with the neighborhoods that, that empty on Pioneer Road, and it's not that bad, and Pioneer Road's a lot busier than this one will be.
Certain times, it is nightmarish, you have no idea what you're saying. Come up to my house.
That road gets busy too.
You're not like it, I'll let them go to college.
You have all the traffic.
Try it, try it seven thirty in the morning.
Try us there, we have a class schedule change.
I support these girls.
Well.
Seven thirty to seven forty-five AM.
You know what? We, believe me, you know, we've thought about this a lot, we've, we've tried to figure out any other ways, but, you know, there's, you've just gotta look at the things that have been done, why they've been done, and that's why we did this presentation tonight, to try to help understand the things that have been done and why they've been done. And, uh, you know, we're gonna try to make everything that's done as safe as possible, that's what we do everywhere around town. You know, we, we put in the things that we need to do to try to make things as safe as possible, and that's all we can do, Pat.
Yeah, when Councilmember Flora was on, I think there was an idea that was proposed of around the curve, of curving, going a little bit and at least.
Yeah, and that's still on the.
But like, that's never been discussed or brought up really in, in a meeting that way, that's only been heard in good faith, coming to us and saying, I'm trying to work with this, here's a potential idea, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know if, where that's at on the docket, if you guys are even considering that, if that's something that's even being looked at, it's, it's.
Actually, Pat, on one of the meetings, it was told that we would be shown those options before they went through with this, like, removing the plan.
And it hasn't happened.
No.
Yeah, and those, that's something that we can, that's another one of those safety items that we can certainly take a look at and consider, yeah.
You keep saying you're gonna look at it, why don't you show us, talk about it, what are the options?
I mean.
You go, there's options that you're not considering.
Well, that's the way the, the transportation plan shows now, but, I mean, that's, that's something that we can.
But the transportation plan also shows five lanes right now.
Yep, yep, and that wasn't shown to the city council today?
No, it wasn't.
Yeah.
So it just feels like there's a lot of contradicting of when it fits the narrative, it works, and when it doesn't.
That's the question I asked.
It's all driven by, by development, what, and what the new deal is.
We're looking at a three lane here right now.
And, and right now, there's.
Are they two lanes?
Two lanes, so change of the plan.
Can you adjust to two lanes?
Two lanes?
Yeah.
Well.
So right now, we're looking at two lanes.
Yeah, yeah.
So put that on the plan.
Well, that's, that's what's on there.
No, it's not, that's not what's on there, there's a seven.
You look at, right, like you talked about, right, look at long range.
You don't care about.
I know you don't care about long range, but as I said, you have.
You guys weren't shown five lanes to vote on it, and that is what's in the law.
Presented to me.
You guys weren't shown the five lanes, that's what's in the plan.
Well, what, what we're, what we're looking at here is, is what we're considering, and so, I mean, you know, the plan has a lot of situations that are, that are predicated on what is needed, when it's needed, and right now, it's not needed. Yes.
Can you, uh, maybe the engineers provide some insight? I don't know if you can pull up the J, the JIS?
GIs.
GIs, um, where Sunrise meets Second East, and then when it crosses over the other side, if you were to make that a three lane where you, you recut into that part that, that the city owns, it kinda makes it look like that road would dot late.
I can comment on that.
Right there.
When it goes to three lanes, you'd do a correction at the intersection.
Yeah, that road would be widened.
So it'll be widened to the north?
To the north, yeah, there's, there's already right away that was deeded.
Right.
Years ago when that, that went in, the city picked up.
Well, I just, if you're, if you're cutting out, which I can't tell, that's that first yellow line, if that's where the new edge would be on the church property.
Yeah, which line is it?
Yeah, I'm just trying to gauge where.
If you projected the sidewalk that's there to the, to the west.
Right.
And projected on with Second.
It would, would line up with the sidewalk profile type. Okay.
Okay, well, I, uh, I, I think some of these, you know, some of the safety things that we've talked about are certainly some things that we can, we can look at further, um, you know, I think, um, I mean, you know, you never know when things might be needed, but for now, all the growth is going out that way and that way, and I don't see it, you know, it's being, needing to, you know, widen that substantially for a long, long time, not widen it, but make it a, turn it from a two lane or three lane into a five lane, so, uh, but, you know, not saying that couldn't happen in, in the future sometime. But, uh, but for now, unless, um, you know, unless there's any, you know, unless.
Eric, I've got a question for you. Do, do the best you can to answer this, but what conditions would trigger moving to this, uh, this road development? Cause I think you're right, a lot of development today is not here, but in your view, what, what would it look like?
What would trigger it from going to like a, a five lane, you mean, or, or just, just having that road go through?
Doing it at all and then adding on?
Well.
Like, so if you've already talked about this, I apologize, but.
Yeah, no, no, we, we didn't, um, yeah, I, it just, just, uh, putting in the road would be, you know, just a matter of, uh, whether it looks like we need to have that road, it might be, it, it might.
Forgive me for interrupting, but my question is, what would it look like? What are the conditions you're looking for in the rest of, uh, the city leadership? What are you looking for to make that decision?
Well, if, you know, if some development started to happen down there where we, we need to have a road to be able to access that development, uh, that would be one of the things that, that would trigger it, I mean, uh, you know, maybe having some funding available that we may not have in the future, that, you know, uh, would be.
I hope this doesn't sound too, too candid, but I, I would hope that it is, it's more about the growth numbers than it is about, oh, hey, we've got some extra money, let's now do it, right, I, I hope that's a fair statement.
Well, yes, uh, I mean, there's always kind of a, a balance that we have to weigh, right? I mean, if we have an opportunity to have some funding available and we know we're gonna need that road in the future, we, we try not to do stuff too far in the future, I mean, like, if you look at, what is it, Fifth South, Keith, it's so wide.
Seventh South by the.
Oh, yeah, it's further up by the church, it's really wide up there, and you see weeds growing in the cracks, well, that tells you that we jumped the gun a little bit up there, that was before any of us, but, but, uh, jumped the gun and made, we thought there was gonna go more developments, so it happened up there, so they felt like they needed more road capacity, and obviously, we haven't, so, you know, we, we've learned from that.
So what I would hope.
Yeah.
Is that that kind of decision isn't made here, right, that it was, you know, we thought, but it didn't happen, poor planning perhaps.
Yeah.
So I, I, I'm not trying to pitch in a corner, cause I know it's hard to give a number, but I understand the general statement, more development would need to be seen over here for us to act on, building a road through and increasing the size of that road, but can you say more about what it would look like? Is there a number of homes, is there? I don't know, I.
Well, yeah, that's really hard to say, because, I mean, even if you get a developer that, that comes in and buys the property and puts in one home, that, you gotta get to that one home, but, you know, of course, eventually that's gonna fill up, right? But, yeah, did you have a comment?
Eric, I have to add, just from an engineering perspective, uh, being a, a transportation here, we're looking at roadways and the roadway network, how it functions as a whole, uh, we do a level of service analysis on the intersections and on the, the roads themselves. And so, uh, a lot of the recommendations are based on, is the road a, at a level of service, an E or an F? And when they hit an E or an F, that means that delays are so significant that it warrants changing the, the roadway network and constructing additional, so if you look at Seventh, for example, we know that there's been fatality on Seventh, we know that there's a lot of crashes, we did look at all the crashes on that road, you look at the, the intersections, there's, um, there's type A accidents, which are hospitalization, multiple that have occurred. That's an, also another, uh, trigger, what can we do to reduce that traffic, to reduce those crashes as well? So there's multiple engineering things we look at, um, that, uh, would cause a recommendation, we gotta do something about the level of service of our streets.
Okay.
So that's a great point, because you're talking about Seventh South, where there's been a college student that has died, and let's move the traffic that's anything southbound coming northbound, right up through a neighborhood of kids.
And then push them through the neighborhood to turn left.
Come and come right off the highway, straight up.
It's been.
And then you're gonna say, oh, now there's backup and delays, now we have to make it wider, now we have to. You're, you're, you're setting it up to become a bigger road, it's exactly what the plan is.
Well, I just have a question, um, it's gonna be a little off topic, but it's specifically for Keith. So I live on Crestview, I don't know if you can wanna zoom to it on this, so everyone can see, um, but my street ends, Crestwood ends, and then my house begins, and BYU College, BYU Idaho owns that street. Um, we do not get plowed, we do not get mail, we do not get garbage, I'm paying property taxes on land that I'm not giving services on, that the city doesn't own. I've talked to the college, Kyle, he owns it, so I've been talking to him a lot, and I, I know you just recognized Kyle's name, because he's recently talked to you. Um, my concern is, I've, we've been working between the city and the college about this piece of land. BYU Idaho doesn't want to pay for stone removal, the city does not come to do any stone removal. I have two children with special needs, my husband was deployed for an entire year, I was stuck, I have had my car towed twice out of that property. People get stuck all the time, we've been working with BYU Idaho, they don't come as often as they should, it's their land. I have to spend money on land that's not mine to maintain and to manage, when I'm also paying property taxes. I spoke to Kyle, Kyle, we asked, can we buy this from you, BYU Idaho says, no, we don't sell to private people. He then reached out to Keith specifically and offered the land to the city, and the city said no, not to sell, not to buy, just to take over. So my question is, Keith, your response to Kyle was, we don't want that land, because our tow trucks get stuck, and it's too steep of an incline, how do you plan to be responsible for a road that's three hundred miles with the exact same incline? Why don't you wanna take responsibility for the road of my house, that should be city and it's not? But you also now wanna take responsibility for a road that's in our exact same neighborhood?
Well, first off, Kyle's never offered the land to the city?
Yeah, my husband's an attorney, he's talked to Kyle, this is directly.
Well, yeah, and I can, I've talked to Kyle too.
Oh, so you didn't, you, you just, he didn't, okay, he didn't.
Before you purchase.
Yeah, uh, they've talked. Sorry, I'm, I'm heated, this is a very frustrating situation, so I'm gonna come in totally blazing.
So I think what Keith said was Kyle hasn't offered.
So I think what Keith said was Kyle hasn't offered, is it less Kyle's?
No, he has, he has...
I appreciate your belief that he has, you can't speak to Kyle's comments.
It's not a belief, it's not a belief.
It is, unless Kyle's standing...
What's your name?
I'm the CDC attorney.
I thought so, thank you. There's nothing that people think more than other...
This is hearsay.
My husband's an attorney, he has talked to Kyle, why do you care?
It's hearsay.
That's, uh, that's, that's, that's a different topic than what we're on here.
No, it's a... I'm sorry, you just pay that.
You're, you're way beyond the, the scope of this meeting.
I know, I know.
And so, is he...
Well, I, well, did we answer the question?
Deal with them.
Whether Kyle offered it or not, I'm happy for Kyle, I'm very pleased.
So before you own the property, um, forget the gentleman's name, Argus.
Argus, this is Argus.
Argus, yes, thank you. So Argus, I believe, got an easement on that property, so there could be access...
Right.
From the home off of that, but that's, that's not, it was not built to a city's street standard, it's not a city's street. It's more like an extended driveway, and I'm not sure who paid it or how it was done, but that's what it is, it's not... It's not a city's street.
It was supposed to be, so what happened, if you want the whole story, the development was created, which is the point I wanna make. This plan has been a part of the city since the seventies. That was before this development happened, it was before the Watsons were given permission to build, it was before the church was built. That plan was there. Now, you have my house that was a part of that development, and through that development, there was a mistake made. Argus purchased that land and the developer made a mistake and sold that land while Argus still had this park. So, yeah, it's not city land, but it was supposed to, it was always the plan, and there was mistakes made, mistakes happen. But let's avoid any more mistakes happening, because this plan has been expired the second you let that neighborhood develop, the second you let the Watsons have access to develop on that road, and when you told the church. There were three mistakes made. So why do we keep fighting for this road to go open when there's loose ends everywhere, like my street? And the Watsons' home, like, there's been mistakes made. Why are we gonna keep going in this direction where we're gonna keep making mistakes? And like they said, accidents and pedestrians get hit.
There, I mean, everything...
It doesn't help a male knife-handed some woman. Nobody was taking any, you were knife-handed a woman like my dad, a Colonel Mike, at an...
Alright, this, this meeting is over, thank you for being here, appreciate your attendance here, and, uh...
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't think it should be over.
No, this meeting is over.
No, wait, one last point, your grandson stays at my house all the time.
I appreciate that.
Just think about it, this is your grandson, these are other people's grandsons.
Appreciate that, and, uh, and I, and we want to try to make every street yours, and this one, Sunrise Drive, we wanna make them all as safe as possible, given the situation that we have. And that's what we've got, like I mentioned, all over town, you know, and this will be no different. You know, if, if that road goes in, if and when it goes in, we will do everything we can to make it as safe as possible, and, uh, and that's, that's really what our plan goes for.
I've been watching online, are you saying that this road is gonna go in no matter what?
Well, it's on the plan, and, and so that's what our plan is for now, yes.
I understand, why can't we use another plan? Why isn't there another option?
Okay, you weren't here earlier, but we went, we went over that in depth, and the reasons that it was decided to, to bring that road up there at the time it was decided. And the other, the other options didn't show any obvious benefit, uh, to the community at large, and so... So that's what was decided, and so that's, that's what's on the plan.
And are we aware that by this, it's gonna change the whole culture? I just wanna point out, your grandson, my son, and other kids in the same group are on the same group of friends. They literally walked from our house into town.
And they do the same thing from over in my neighborhood, they walk across Pioneer Road to the church.
Your house is left, because you, Fred Wyatt's front of your house.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's fine, but by changing this road, it's gonna change the whole culture, because there's so many children that live up here. The appeal of living here is...
I, I, I'm not arguing with you, I, you're right, it will, it'll change it, it'll change the dynamic there. And it's something that, like I said, we will do everything we can to make it as safe as possible, and I would hope that you as parents will do everything you can to make it as safe as possible. You know, your kids wear things that they can see.
Why, if, why, if you don't want to take on responsibility for the city, why are you gonna put in land in another spot? Why not just focus on Seventh, why are we putting a road?
Because as cities grow, we have to have more roads, so... Seventh is already, no, no, we, cause, cause we're trying to, we're trying to spread traffic out and not try to funnel it all, you know, through, through one area. That's the, that's the, the whole traffic thing is to try to avoid another Second East, you know, by creating roads that we can spread the traffic out and have it be lighter on, you know, instead of having twice as much traffic here, we have half as much traffic, you know, that kind of a thing, so, okay? Alright, well, thank you all for being here, we appreciate it. We'll be moving into our city council meeting at six-thirty, and, uh, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, thank you very much.